Good evening. At this time, please remember to silence your cellphones and be advised that the proceedings are recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the entrance, and if you would, present it to our city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting for the City of Grand Terrace City Council, July 10, 2018. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Gary Dineski of the Kingdom Life Fellowship. And immediately following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Minor League All-Star Team. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, I thank you for the freedom to be here this evening, to live in a land where we can be free. We're free to have friends, we're free to do business, we're free to worship as we choose. And I thank you also that we can either live or perhaps do business in this community as well. Lord, it's so encouraging to see so many different ages here this evening. Lord, I thank you for those that serve and protect in our community here. And as we proceed with the meeting this evening, Lord, I pray for your guidance and your wisdom and the decisions that are made, that everything that we do will bring glory and honor to you as well as peace and comfort to our community as we grow together in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you All-Star Team. Madam City Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNebo.
Present.
Mayor Uhef Korm.
Thank you. So tonight, we have some special presentations, very exciting. We are going to recognize two All-Star Teams who I understand not only went to District 21, but I believe they were both undefeated. That's just absolutely incredible. So I'm very excited they're here tonight. And what we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to call up the coaches. We've got Mark Romo, who's the manager of our Little League. And Team Mom Sandra Romo. Now I want to single out the manager, coach, and team mom for a minute because these are the people that gave their time to help these young baseball players to learn the fundamentals, to practice, to play hard, and to come together as an All-Star Team and then do such a successful job in representing our community. So let's give them another round of applause. And I have a certificate, and tonight also, we will be giving you a lapel pin that is a key with the city seal on it. Because this is what we do for our community members that represent our community in such a fashion as you've done. And so we really want to make tonight a special thank you to you for your hard work and effort and your teamwork. I think probably, if you could come by, let's see, how can we do this? I have a certificate for each of you, I want to make sure you each get it. So I want to call you up, and I'm going to ask if Mayor Pro Tem will hand you your certificate when you come up. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Wilson to give you a pin when you come up. And then we will take a group picture, we'll have you speak, and then we'll have council members have their opportunity to say thank you as well. So let's start with Jason Alvarado. Is Jason here tonight?
No.
Okay. So if you are here, just go ahead and come up this way. Nicholas Romo. All right, City of Grand Terrace, these are your Little League All-Stars for 2018 All-Star District. All right, I'll ask if my colleagues have any words that they'd like to say at this time. Councilmember Henderson.
I asked the coach where I could get one of those T-shirts. I promised to sport it well years and years ago, many, many years ago, too many years ago to recount. I was a Little Leaguer, played a little bit of shortstop, and great memories. Very, very proud of the Grand Terrace Little Leaguers, the ones who have represented the city so well. Thank you for your contributions and for the coaches and the Moms. Unbelievable. Thanks again.
Councilmember Wilson.
Coaches and Moms, congratulations, guys. Way to go. You know, I was, I'm so old that it goes all the way back to Don Drysdale, Sandy Koufax, Willie Mays, all those guys, and only a few of those, probably your parents don't even remember them. But happy day, and keep slugging, okay?
Mayor Pro Tem.
I want to thank you all. It's always exciting to me to see Little League teams. My father was a coach, and the short time that I was able to enjoy my father, because he passed away when I was three years old, my mom continued with the tradition, and it was hard, you know? Dinner was a hot dog, and I really couldn't eat hot dogs for a lot of years. So, you know, I know the sacrifice that you all make, and, you know, the trophy is when you really excel at something which you have, and I'm really excited for you, and I also really just think those T-shirts are awesome.
Councilmember Hesse.
Wow, congratulations, coaches too, and Team Moms, and our board. You know, it's a lot of hard work, a lot of free time, a lot of hours, a lot of headaches, but a lot of joy. We appreciate everything you do for our community, and you guys representing Grand Terrace. My sons played, I think we only won one game though at the time, and then we went home. But a lot of practice, a lot of teamwork, you know, you guys are family to each other, and you're always going to remember this day, and you're going to remember this day when you got that pin from the council, and we're very proud of you. Now that little pin, it doesn't get you out of jail card or anything for you, but just wear it with pride. You guys earned it, and I know you had fun. How many people hit a homerun this year? Anybody? Yeah, wow. All right, who pitches a 90 mile an hour fastball? Wow. It's come a long way since, you know, when I played too, we had to wear Levi's and everything else, and one glove fit all, you know, we had a big sized glove. But congratulations, and I guess the coaches, Team Moms, parents, a lot of sacrifice being out there with the kids, but it's a joy, and a lot of years to come, and then you're working with the high school and college and stuff, but it's great, great memories, great fun, it's a great community, and thank you, boys.
All right, we have Grand Terrace Junior League, who also went undefeated this season and won the 2018 All-Star District Championship. And the Junior League All-Stars, are you here tonight? Please raise your hands. We're going to treat you tonight as well. And so I'm going to call up the coaches. I have Adrian Tapia. Again, these are the people that gave of their time and taught these Junior League All-Stars to come together as a team and to play their best, and I think that we want to make sure that they get an extra round of applause right now. So we have certificates for each of you, and each of you will get a pin that is in the shape of a key with the city seal on it. And if I could ask Mayor Pro Tem for her assistance again, and Councilmember Wilson, we'll start with Tess Tapia. And Kim Calhoun. Sarah Chavez. Raylin Bonker. All right, Grand Terrace, this is your Junior League All-Star District Championship Team. All right, colleagues, do you have words to say to the ladies? Councilmember Hesse.
Ladies, congratulations, you know, I used to be a baseball coach, and my boys, one time, they wanted to challenge the softball girls to a game, and we lost. You know, that ball's bigger, but those girls, they know how to throw that ball. Anybody throw a 90 mile an hour softball, I mean, that thing goes flying, you're looking for the overpitch, and you get the underpitch, and so they ate some humble pie, and I had to buy pizza, so we lost. But, you know, congratulations, you guys rock, and, you know, that pin that you got there, wear it with pride, and we didn't want to tell you guys, since you guys all got a pin, you got to stay here for the whole council meeting tonight, listen to us. But, coaches, parents, board members, thank you again, thank you for everything. And that's what makes Grand Terrace grand, with the community and everybody working together and going up there, and, you know, it's watching the kids, young adults play ball, you know, enjoying each other, and making that family connection that they use all the way through school. So parents and coaches and league, thank you again for all your hard work making this happen for the kids. Appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tem Robles.
Always so impressed with you young ladies. Genetically, I missed out, you know, the women in my family, the men in my family are phenomenal athletes, and I'm not. It's just always been a sore spot for me. So when I see people like you that excel in it, I'm just always in awe. And I really want to also thank the coaches that work on your behalf too.
Councilmember Wilson.
Parents and supporters did a terrific job, obviously. It takes a lot of energy to be able to do this stuff, and now's the time, obviously. Ladies, keep achieving. I have no sons. I have a daughter, I have a granddaughter. My daughter is 39, about to be 40, and my granddaughter is about to go off to college. The things that she did during her time as a youth are what made it possible for her to be able to continue to achieve. I am stupefied with the idea that this is so long in coming, but I congratulate you for having the energy to do it, and I urge you to continue in that upward trend.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo the comments of all my colleagues. Really, there's nothing like sports to teach you a lot about yourself, maybe things that you didn't know. Teamwork, overcoming adversity, working or playing with people that maybe you don't particularly have a personal relationship with. All those things that turn out to be good life lessons moving ahead. So thank you for your efforts, the coaches. There must be pretty good baseball DNA in the Tapia family, I must say.
Thank you so much to both of our All-Star Teams for showing so much pride in your community and coming together as teams to win, and Junior League undefeated is just so wonderful. Further, though, thank you for being here tonight and letting us celebrate with you. That was very nice of you to take time to come and do that, and once again, congratulations to both teams. All right, we have a third presentation, and this is by Senior Associate Regional Director Matt Friedman and Education Director Annie Ortega of the Anti-Defamation League. If you would, please come to the podium.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here, and my colleague Annie. My name is Matthew Friedman. I am a Senior Associate Regional Director with the Anti-Defamation League, ADL, based in our Los Angeles office. So the impetus for us being here this evening is because there is a local landmark in Grand Terrace which is called Jap Hill. For those of you that don't know, the term "Jap" is a slur used against people of Japanese descent. I know that is not the official term, I believe, but we are here just to talk about, a little bit about what we do as an organization, as a civil rights and education organization, and give you some resources and a few, I guess, talking points for instances when people do hear slurs and other bigoted language, some things that they can think about, and some things they can actually say in the short time that we have here. So thank you again for having us. So the mission of the Anti-Defamation League is to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment for all. So that has been our mission since we were founded in 1913. We were founded in Chicago primarily to defend the rights and of the Jewish community at that time, but from the beginning of our formation, we have always known that it's important to stand up for the rights and for the dignity of all people of all sorts of backgrounds, that if one group can be marginalized and discriminated against them, we're all vulnerable. So to that end, there are three main things that ADL does. We investigate, we investigate hate crimes, incidents, extremism, from the whole political spectrum. We do education work, which is what my colleague Annie does here. We work with local schools all over the country, with universities. We train law enforcement, we're one of the largest nonprofit trainers of law enforcement around the country. And we also do advocacy, so whether it's on issues of promoting hate crimes laws, we wrote the model laws which are in 45 states and the District of Columbia, advocating for civil rights for all Americans. So these are some of the types of work that we do, and there's obviously more breadth to that. So Annie, if you want to say a few words about our education work?
Good evening, members of the City Council. City Manager Duffy, thank you for the invitation to talk a little bit about the education programs that we do as well. So as Education Director for the Anti-Defamation League out of the Los Angeles office, which covers San Bernardino, Kern County, Riverside County, as well as Los Angeles County, I really focus on providing training, not only to students, but also to teachers and professional development in terms of anti-bias education. So we work with K through 12 educators as well as students, providing training that really focuses on anti-bias principles as well as being an ally. So our student programs are entitled "Becoming an Ally," and it's my pleasure to be here and answer any questions you may have regarding our education programs.
Thank you. So these are just some examples of the curricula, some of the education resources that we have on our website. You can see just the sort of the breadth of the types of things that we do and the range, going from elementary up through college, through the workplace. Some of our law enforcement trainings that we do, I referred to earlier, we train on extremism, hate crimes, hate incidents, core values of law enforcement as well. Something else that came out last year after the events in Charlottesville, the ADL worked with the organization of mayors to come up with a mayor's compact, and you can see signatory cities all over the country, and cities can still join to that even today, talking about things that cities and local communities can do to speak out against extremism, against hate speech and hate crime, and that's still an ongoing relationship. Just, and there's some information that we provided to all of you as well about that initiative. So this graphic we have right here is called "The Pyramid of Hate," and Annie, do you want to sort of give a brief overview of what it is and why it's pertinent?
Certainly. Thank you, Matt. So in our education work, we often focus on what we really look at as, you know, the Pyramid of Hate, which talks about sort of a gradation or levels to hate in particular. Where our education primarily focuses is on the base level, which is called our biased attitudes. So this can be anything from stereotyping, insensitive remarks, you know, fear of differences, non-inclusive language, you know, the term that we hear more and more frequently is microaggressions. So this is primarily where the K through 12 education is focused, and our Becoming an Ally program is focused, really looking at that base level. As we move on, we start, we may begin to see acts of bias, which usually build upon bias. biased attitudes. So, they may include bullying, ridicule, name-calling, slurs, epithets, social avoidance, dehumanization, biased and belittling jokes. The next level that we may see is discrimination. So, these are acts of bias, which can be economic, political, educational, employment and housing segregation, as well as criminal justice disparities. The next level would be biased motivated violence. This is where you'll see hate crimes, things as murder, rape, assault, arson, terrorism, vandalism, desecration, threats. And finally, the top layer is genocide. So, that's the act or intent to deliberately and systematically annihilate an entire people. You know, what's really important to note about this pyramid is that no one layer is more important than the other. It's really a matter of targeting each and every level. Like I mentioned, our education programs are mainly going to focus on biased attitudes starting at that base level, but what we see is that if you were to flip it over on its side, it's a slippery slope.
So, some of the resources in there in the packet that I gave to your city council is we have some lesson plans that people can use, then you can share with your school district and educators and parents about how to challenge biased language. So, for example, if people hear people referring to this landmark as Jap Hill, things they can say and how they can respond to that. Another example is, it's called "Words Matter." It's how do you stand up to bigoted language? And I encourage people, if they have time, they can go on our website, adl.org, and they can find all these under "Education." So, this is a link that we provided to you as well for all of these examples. So, just a few points to give people as they're here and, you know, before they leave this evening about what are some ways that we can respond to jokes and slurs that we come across every day. So, it's important, first of all, to clarify what you want to get out of the interaction when you hear something that's biased. If you just want to express anger towards the offender, it's probably that maybe it'll be satisfying to you personally, but it may also escalate the situation, or you may embarrass the situation. But these are usually ineffective in trying to change a person's behavior and attitudes for the future. You can also assume goodwill. So, many people, and I'm sure that's the case in your community, who say, use that term for that landmark, don't do it with the intent to make a biased remark. They may have no idea of the history of that term, of the history of that hill. So, they do it out of ignorance. Because they don't intend harm, we often, we try to assume that no harm is done, but that's not always the case. So, talk to the person privately. Speaking to the offender one-on-one, you can remove the person's need to say, or excuse me, speak to them privately. If you take them out of a public space, they won't feel so defensive, so that's important. And also, lastly, use "I" statements, not "you" statements. So, we want to let the offender know how you feel about what was said. So, instead of focusing on what the other person did that was wrong, you can say, "This made me feel, I feel this way," right? So, you want to make sure that the person doesn't feel so defensive and you want, you don't want to put them in the position of they have to defend their actions. So, you're saying, "This is how I feel," and so forth. And that's a way that you can communicate the impact of what was said and why it was problematic. Wanted to mention a few other resources. We work, we have something called the Asian Jewish Initiative in Los Angeles. So, we work with a number of organizations in the Asian-American community. One of them, one of our partners is the Japanese-American National Museum, and I encourage people here in Grand Terrace to, if you're ever in downtown Los Angeles, in Little Tokyo, to actually visit the museum. They have a lot of wonderful resources. You can also get resources about the Japanese-American experience through their website. They're a great educational resource. So, these are some of the examples from their website about the internment camps during World War II, just information about the Japanese-American community in particular. This group, the Japanese-American Citizens League, is not a group that we directly work with, but they seem to have a mission that also aligns with what we're talking about this evening. And they are, I think, they're based mostly in Northern California, but they also have a website and they have some resources. And I would encourage members of your community and the city council to reach out to local Japanese-American organizations as well to get more information and to find out, you know, how the name of that landmark might impact people in your community. So, that about wraps up our presentation about our ADL resources. We've left a number of handouts with you that you have, and they're up here in the front, too, just about ADL work in general and then some of our education work. As Annie mentioned, we do work a lot with local schools all over Southern California, all over the country, in fact, and we are available as a resource. So, thank you again for having us, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you, Director Friedman and Director Ortega. I have one question with respect to the topic at hand tonight. What's the best way to rename something that doesn't have an official name?
That's a great question. What do you think?
You know, I think recommendations from the community are always great.
If you could speak into the microphone, thank you.
I think recommendations from the community are always great. So, engaging your community and having these discussions would be a great first step in thinking about different ways that you might rename this landmark if it has no official name. You know, we find that when we engage students in our work, they come up with a lot of great ideas that we may not have thought of. So, that would be my recommendation, to really seek the community's support and help.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mayor Protim?
I just wanted to read something. Apparently, the State Archives have just done a Japanese-American display, and one of the things that I read on there was Earl Warren was the Attorney General at the time of World War II, and he had every local sheriff or law enforcement official send a letter regarding the internment of Japanese. I was going to read two items, and this says, "Eliminate all Japanese. However, other enemy aliens might be required to wear a badge of distinctive type or color, which will be easily recognizable, and bear identification." It also says, "Eliminate all Japanese from restricted areas regardless of citizenship. Many Italian enemy aliens are excellent citizens regardless of their lack of citizenship procedures or papers and are known to be of distinctly American ideas and ideals." So, here in these two paragraphs, Japanese who are citizens are being recommended by our law enforcement people to be interned, while at the same time, they're saying that Italian folks, who may not be citizenships, citizens of this country are more likely to be trusted. So, there's many people in this community that feel the term "Jap Hill" is not offensive, that it's harmless, that it doesn't mean anything historically, but obviously, based on this, that's not true. My husband, who's sitting here tonight, his great aunt was married to a Japanese-American. He was interned. The family was trying to navigate this new world. The two boys were served in the segregated 442, and they're actually on the Japanese memorial wall there. And I wrote an article for our local paper, the Grand Terrace City News, and out of that, a friend of ours, Cici Ramirez, who lives in town, had a picture that she wanted to give to a neighbor. They had some of their possessions when, in San Bernardino, California, when they were interned, and my husband and I were able to locate that family, and they're going to exchange these artifacts that, all these years later, we still have healing to do. And I really want to thank you for coming out here. I really appreciate, this is a sacrifice on your part, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Wilson.
Appreciate the work that you're doing. You know, recently, I had an opportunity to go through an extension course in relation to English learners and folks with disabilities and how to educate and to work with folks that might have a tough time being able to do that, or to learn English. And I learned a lot, and one thing that I definitely learned about that was a difficulty that's happening within our school system about bullying. And I guess it really comes from the very top. If you want to, you know, reflect on World War II, it was a bullying situation that took place. And unfortunately, when we create a circumstance like that in our homes and we let it seep into our culture, and it's okay from one standpoint to call some kid something wrong and for no reason, and then turn around and start to bully others, we take away our God-given rights for freedom. It's the wrong thing. And then it declines, and we think that it just stops in our neighborhoods, but it goes all the way up the chain. And unfortunately, when it goes all the way up the chain, it affects millions. So, I applaud what you're doing and I applaud the education aspect of it, and I applaud the youth of today who are able to see through a great deal of that, that most of them are able to do that. And parents and neighbors, let's help them. It's the only way to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mr. City Manager, did I see that you have this issue going before our Park and Rec Commission for discussion? Was that something that I saw? No? Okay. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you for coming out tonight. You know, I served in the Marine Corps for nine years and I worked at a federal prison for twenty-six years. You observe racism that come to prison and work. I also had to work with an Aryan brother that just passed away today in the HIMACs, and I had to work with him, guarding him. And, you know, the stuff that comes out of their mouth, the ignorance, it's just, you know, amazing, and I think that's how they were brought up. But, you know, as me and my fellow officers, we didn't care what nationality, what race, we were brothers and sisters in arms. And that's how we got to bring this to our kids, you know? Race is an ugly thing. It's up to us parents to nurture our kids and educate them and just remember that we are all God's people, we're all the same. So, God bless. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey.
Mayor, I just have a question of staff. Is Blue Mountain an official name?
Mayor, actually, Allen did some research on that, Mayor Protim, and he can tell you and how it was designated.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protim. Allen, French Public Works Director. Geographic features were named at the time they were putting together the U.S. Geological Maps all over the country, and at that point, each physical feature was named, and on our quadrant of the geographic map, they did set that name on Blue Mountain.
All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and we really appreciate your educational materials that you're leaving behind. I think that will be very helpful to us. Thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you.
I would...
Mayor Protim.
I would like to have this delegated to the Park and Rec Commission to advise us on how best to proceed and come back on a future agenda item.
I think that would be a good way to probably engage the community, too. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to suggest to you and the Mayor Protim that that be a formal motion.
Okay. Well, can we make a motion?
If we can do that, I'm not sure we can, but...
Mr. City Attorney, is direction enough at this point? Should we make a motion?
It was on the agenda as a presentation, but I think the message is loud and clear.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protim Robles voting yes, and Mayor Matt Nabo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. Items may also be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Mr. City Attorney, we had a request to speak on item number four that was on our consent calendar, but the speaker slips were stuck together. I know we've already voted on that agenda item, but I would really like to have him have the opportunity to speak on that item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you can have him go ahead and speak at this time.
Okay.
And if what he has to say would require you to reconsider that item through the Rosenberg rules, you can do a motion to reconsider.
Okay. And then he also has a request to speak just during the public comment, plain and simple. So, Mr. Rivera, if you would come up and speak on item four? And this was our check register.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hope everyone had a nice Fourth of July. I'm sorry I've missed the last two meetings. I was in Florida with my family at Disney World. Couple things, I just want to make going forward, and as long as I'm healthy to do so, I'm going to be looking at all supporting documents for every council meeting and probably throwing some questions out. My first question is, is on the Arrowhead Credit Union, which was the Visa card, that there was a purchase for $1,749 for a reservation for an ice rink. I don't know what that was for. I don't know if there's prior discussion, but that kind of looked a little weird to me. The next question I had on that is, we paid, let's see, where was it? Sorry, scrolling along here. And I don't even know if anybody really looks at these. Maybe I'm the only one that goes line by line. My wife thinks I'm very annoying when she makes the bills out, but I'd like to know where the money's going. And then we paid $3,825 for a new webpage. I thought that's why the city manager hired an executive assistant that was young, so he could do the tweeting, the Facebook, the Instagram-y, and all of that stuff. Why are we paying this gentleman $60,000 a year? He can't design a simple city webpage, so we got to spend another $38.25 for that. The other question I have, and it may be discussed, or maybe I can talk to the city clerk on the side, is that we are paying for each council member's health insurance. I see a lot of reimbursements for health insurance. Madam Mayor, I think you had a disbursement for $479 on this check register, and I don't know about that, and I think the community should know. So, those were my questions on agenda item four before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. City Manager, do you want to address those questions?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. In regards to the ice rink, that was a part of the city's holiday tree lighting program, and that $1,200 was just the payment for the ice rink, and the majority of that cost was actually recovered back through the fees and also through the additional funds that were raised from sponsorship. Then, in relation to the new webpage, in 2014, fifteen extra proceeds the city had, the city had, is developing a brand-new webpage, it's going to be launching in this month, actually, and that is actually putting, building the entire webpage. There was some reference to the executive assistant, and how those pages work is that the pages are developed, and then your staff goes in and they make the modifications, and they're being trained and doing that in the future. So, that's the, that was part of the base package of the building the webpage. And that was... And was there one more?
Councilmember Health Insurance.
Yes. And Miss Fortune can help me out with that one. Currently, I think the process is that, or the city attorney can explain how that whole process works regarding reimbursement for health insurance.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem. City Council Cynthia Fortune. For those that are not aware, the city council does not receive a stipend for actually being your elected body and governing this. One of the stipends that they do receive is a minimum, and that is a health reimbursement, not to exceed a cap equal to that of employees, which is $640. And this has been effect almost since incorporation, so this is not a new thing. But this is one of the very minimum stipends that they do receive as council members.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we are in public comment at this time, and so, Mr. Jeremy Rivera, you wanted to speak during public comment.
Good evening again. I'm still lobbying for an extra deputy. I think it's very important to our community. While I was in Florida, I saw some interesting things that they do back there. I thought, well, that's not going to cost us any money, but maybe just parking a squad car somewhere in strategic places and moving it around once a week is what they do back there. So I thought that was a freebie. We might look into it with Lieutenant Wolf. Lieutenant Wolf also, I believe while I was gone, made a presentation about paying an overtime deputy $160,000. I believe Madam Mayor also agreed, and someone else seconded it, but it failed. It bothers me that we can't get the council to agree to spend $160,000 for an overtime deputy for our city. I'm very worried about that. I wish the council would direct the city manager to find the $160,000. I think Madam Mayor took an immense amount of time to find ways to cut in the budget. That must have taken her hours. I did agree with you, I believe, on our political comment page. I just, my heart goes out to you because I can't imagine the hours you took to get that, to come up with those numbers. A couple of you have come right out and say you backed the blue, but then you voted against the blue, and that bothers me. I don't understand it. I don't want to call 911, and someone's breaking into my house, and they say, "All right, your deputy's 15 minutes away in Little Melinda," because the other deputy's booking somebody, and he's over in West Valley booking them. But we had the money to hire, and Madam City Clerk, you might need an assistant, and I appreciate that, but we hired you an assistant, and I believe that money should be going towards getting another deputy overtime. We have to find that money. It's so important to this community. It's so important to Lieutenant Wolf's men out there on the street. Councilman Hesse, you talked about the Cage Park incident on May 22 council meeting, how that deputy was alone. He needed backup. You know? We need that other deputy. I don't know how else to express it, and I know it's going to go to the ballot on November, but we're in June, or I'm sorry, July. I'm still on vacation. But I just don't know what else to say about that. We need another deputy out there. Those guys can't be left alone, especially on Friday and Saturday nights. You know? It's too bad that you guys voted that down, and I hope that you reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. All right, that was the last request to speak I had, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last city council meeting, we had a discussion regarding the two-year budget for fiscal year 1819 and 1920. And during the course of that discussion, the mayor asked the city attorney a question, and I inappropriately interrupted that discussion in public. And so I feel that an apology to the mayor and to the city attorney should also be made in public. So that's the purpose of this part of my discussion. Along with my colleagues, I attended the City-County Conference. It's a conference between county supervisors and the city councils and city managers and department heads from all 24 cities in the county. I've been attending for a number of years, most recently as staff, but now as a legislative advocate for the city of Grand Terrace. During all my years attending this conference, I believe that the one we just attended was probably the best, in my experience. We had a few years where the presenters weren't, in my view, top-notch, and the survey forms received by the county reflected that. And so this year's presentations by the county staff and by others invited were, in my view, routinely excellent. So you're probably going to hear from my colleagues on some of the things that, some of the sessions that we attended, and I won't go into great detail. But I did want to discuss, just briefly, there was a presentation made by the commander of the National Training Center, just incredible in its depth and in its descriptions of the training that our armed forces go through, the facilities that are available, the live-fire exercises. When you hear, when you, the presentation that we heard, and you hear how it's all put together in terms of the training of our armed forces, not only it makes you proud as an American, but more importantly, you really get a feel for how intellectual and scientific our approaches are with respect to our warfighting capability. It was an excellent presentation. I also attended with my colleagues a session called Public Business Meetings. Is it the public's business? I'm sorry. It's called Public Business Meetings, Business or Free-for-All. And there were a number of presentations and videos regarding city council meetings, meetings from the local Unified School District, Board of Supervisors meetings, where the meetings spun out of control for one reason or another. And there were tips given to my colleagues, myself, mayors, on how to control these situations when they do arise. One of the things that caused me to reflect upon my apology was there was a discussion on council members disagreeing with one another in council meetings and in heated circumstances. And one of the things that I think is important, those of you who know me well know that I completely and fully subscribe to Vision 2030, and one of the core values in our Vision 2030 is mutual respect. It's part of the package that we receive with every agenda package, and it's throughout City Hall in terms of our vision. And so with respect to my own conduct, it's not how I've been trained, it's not how I've been taught, and it's not how I conduct myself. I hold myself to a high standard, and so I hope that my apology is accepted by the mayor and the city attorney. Last, there was, I attended a presentation called Taking Our Communities Back, and I must say, even though the topic was difficult to absorb, it was riveting. It was prepared by, it was a two-part presentation, one by the undersheriff, Shannon Dykis from San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and the city manager from Monrovia. And briefly, I'll just tell you that it was a presentation about Prop 57, Prop 47, and AB 109, the impact it's having on law enforcement throughout the state of California. I'm hopeful that at some point, we can get the undersheriff to make the same presentation to the Grand Terrace community that he made to the City-County Conference, because it's must-see. It truly is must-see information regarding crime, crime statistics, the county jail demography, the kinds of things that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. If anecdotally, we felt that crime was increasing, well, you're right, it is. And they provided the statistics on what has happened in California throughout the state as a result of the passage of the two propositions in AB 109. For those of you unfamiliar, just briefly, most of those bills took felony acts and made them misdemeanors. So, for instance, now rape of a dead person is considered a misdemeanor and not a felony. Think about that for a moment. Now, example after example after example, and because of the overcrowding that we have in our prison system, the county jails, and particularly L.A. County and San Bernardino County, are tremendously overloaded. I won't go into any more detail, but it was a tremendous presentation. Take Back Our Communities was started by the cities of Monrovia, Arcadia, La Cuenca Ridge, and I believe Montebello and Monterey Park, four cities. If you recall, recently, the city of Riddier had a law enforcement officer killed by a longtime gang member who then wrote a note and said, "This is why, AB 109 is why I'm doing this." So accept it. Regardless, there are now 33 cities in this Take Back Our Community coalition, and I had suggested to Mr. Duffy that we look into joining Take Back Our Community, because there is an effort afoot by all of these cities and member organizations to take the next step in changing some of the legislation recently adopted, either by initiative or by actions of the Assembly. So if in fact, we're successful in getting undersheriff Dykis to come and make the same presentation to the Grand Terrace community, regardless of what's being discussed in terms of new deputies, old deputies, additional deputy, the context is far broader and far greater, and of course, it requires a more comprehensive approach to our crime-fighting efforts. So thank you for your time and attention. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson, and I appreciate the apology, and it is certainly accepted. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably my comments, because I already had it written down before Mr. Rivera got up there. So I'm not, you know, I guess you could take it as answered, but I'm not communicating. I mean, this is just what I observed and a lot of thought through this, and especially since, you know, we have citizens running that agenda item. But I'm just going to break it down. You know, I've got two pages here, but I was told, you know, name kind of brought up on social media, and we just went through training on this and stuff, and there's been a lot of misleading commentary on social media regarding the budget adoption, additionally to deliberately misleading comments that no contents have been proven to why council took the action it did. And the fiscal year 2019 and '20 budget only shows a total projected revenue increase of $108,588 over fiscal year 2018 and '19 budget. Unfortunately, the majority of the cost revenues, $88,580, is taken up proposals. 2019-'20 increase for the city police services, contract leaving the party, leaving us with $20,000 to deal with all other additional costs, and we had additional costs throughout the year. I mean, example, like we had to bring in Crosswalk, we rezoned areas, we had things break on us. So we had that money coming up. Going through the budget, you know, one of the things, while I went every time, because I listened to the community, and the community wanted also to have our things, programs that we have. They wanted to have the programs for the Little League and all that stuff. So you have to take all that in consideration when you do this. But I'm willing to meet with Mr. Rivera, or anybody can sit and have an office hours, but when you get up there, you know, and you're saying stuff, one of the things I learned since doing community services and stuff is you got to have all your information, and you could look at a, here's a, I'll give you something you could review, a meeting on agenda February 27, 2017, and take that for, you know, look at that and grab some information on that. That was a long-term fix that we could have did on there. But we can't keep bandaging with the sheriff. We done this one-time money, and we did it again for the overtime, and we even have enough to cover overtime. And what's going to happen, I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to be right out, they're going to see that we keep bandaging the thing, and we're never going to have a long-term solution for our sheriffs to protect them and to protect this community. So we keep bandied, 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 and it's not going to happen. And that's, you know, I could go in more detail about that, but I was just, you know, since my name was brought up on that. And nothing against you, Mr. Rivera, but, you know, you could come at a meeting and stuff, I'll be happy to sit down with you, and we could go over some stuff. But I did go to the Arrowhead Conference thing, and I had a really good time there. What's one good thing about coming to these conferences is that you meet a lot of people, and I did meet S.B.C.T.A. Mr. Wolf?
Dr. Wolf.
Dr. Wolf. And one of my questions was to him, and I guess, Mayor, you already had the answer. You asked him, too, was how much did it cost to tear down that retaining wall, how much taxpayer dollars? And he said $2 million. And I was like, wow. You know, why? You know, because I guess he said that the bridge wasn't in plans or something? I don't know. I would like you to just...
I will send the information that I received to all my colleagues if they're interested.
Yeah, because it was brought up, and that was just the conversation, because you see it and stuff. And, you know, when I was on the Oversight Committee for the high school, one of the biggest things was, you know, the waste on, you know, because when we came in, and the waste of a million dollars that we, when they bought the property over there in Richie Canyon, when they knew it was on earthquake fault, so. And what that brought up is because of the gas taxes and stuff. So that was just an interesting conversation, but it's good to be out there, and you listen to other cities. And like, Mr. Henderson said, the AB 109 and SBS and stuff, you know, and the criminal intent there, and my son actually works in the jails, and he knows that he's a, you're getting inmates from the prisons coming into the jails, and they're actually corrupting the inmates that could probably have a second chance in life. So it's a big thing. We all got to stick together. We all got to have it on our voting, who we're going to vote for and stuff. We also, I did meet with the Sheriff's Union President, really nice guy, Mr. Grant Ward, and found out some information and stuff. It was kind of concerning, and seen some of the pictures of some of the criminal activity that happened here in Grand Terrace that got me really concerned and stuff, so. But, yeah, like I said, I hope everybody did have a safe and happy Fourth of July. I think we had some citations written up for illegal fireworks, and, you know, we're not out, the city of Grand Terrace isn't out there to spoil your fun, we're just out there to make sure everybody's safe and secure. We have a big mountain right here that caught on fire one year, and we don't want another fire, and people, their houses that burned down, it was devastated. And we just got to respect others and what's going on, and please, and there's still some going on, please stop. You know, we don't, you know, it's not fun. We have a lot of residents that are PTSD, and a lot of animals out there, and speaking of animals, please license your pet, so that way they can come back to you. It's not because the city wants to make money, we want to make sure you guys get your animals back. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Councilmember Hesse, I think I know the answer, and I think, as sad as it is to think of how that wall ended up being torn down along the freeway, it's been my experience that consultants, unless they're directed correctly, rarely coordinate with each other. And so whether or not, in fact, I'll give you a good example. Back in the day when...
I think you need to stay on your remarks that you had there, not have a discussion on an item that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. No, I just say, the bottom line is, is that when the freeways lifted up in the last large earthquake we had, I happen to know personally that they were in the middle of rebuilding the freeways, when they discovered that there was uplift involved in an earthquake, a seismic condition. And the answer from Caltrans was, we weren't, we were right in the middle of it, and we weren't going to take it back apart, so we just went ahead and finished it the way it was designed. So they knew, but in the long run, they didn't make any accommodation for it. I don't get my, I don't get my news on the social media. I have a tendency to avoid it. On the 21st of June, I didn't say anything about this in the last meeting, but I'm going to shorten it a lot. 21st of June at 11:15 in the morning, I'll back up a little bit, quarter to 11, I called my wife, and she didn't answer the phone, so I figured she probably was in another part of the house. At about a quarter after 11, the best we can tell, a couple of guys knocked on our door real hard, on the front door, and subsequently jumped our side yard fence, and all of our windows were closed. And all of our windows were closed and and tight, secure, but there was a nine-inch space in a bathroom window. And one of the the marauders that decided to break into our house climbed through that nine-inch space and broke into our house, and my wife was home. And once they realized somehow that my wife was home, that she ran out the front door and called nine-one-one, I guess they changed their direction. Fortunately, my wife was not injured. Fortunately, they didn't take anything, and they left. But I want to applaud, just as much as I can, the response by our first responders, including Lieutenant Wolf. By the time I got there, which I was only about fifteen minutes away, and I asked a friend to run up there and just give my wife some peace of mind, she called me right next to a brick wall, hiding. And she, her voice was quaking, and she was scared to death. And the first responders got there within only a few moments. I must have had ten guys with a team meeting on there investigating what had taken place. And they did a thorough investigation, they walked us in into the house, we checked everything, and I couldn't have asked for a better performance. So, thank you. That puts the rubber on the road in relation to police protection and so on. So, when we talk about whether or not we have enough, or we don't have enough, or we don't have enough money, or any of the rest of it, I can guarantee that we got the best working with us. Second, on the twenty-fifth of June, I graduated ten more guys out of my little class, and what it is, it's a construction class. And the purpose behind the construction class is to take folks that are transitional or on welfare, in really dire circumstances, sometimes they don't, they don't have a home. In fact, three of them didn't have homes. And educate them over a period of time, and then turn around and place them in jobs. And I submit to you that that is one of the ways, getting involved with your community, it's one of the ways that we can actually try to reverse some of this junk that keeps getting dumped on us and some of the stuff that happens to us, you know? And unless we get involved, then we're, you know, the same kind of people that do this and and don't really accomplish anything. Our forefathers knew that they had a possibility that they could be hanged, and we just commemorated their bravery and their courage to start a new nation out of something that was, started out to be a colony. And they were against the most powerful nation in the world, and yet they had the guts and the determination to see it through. And it takes that kind of situation. And I guess part of the reason why I know that is because I just got done taking the constitutional examination class. I got an A, but it was hard. And I submit to you too, if you want to know a little bit more about what this country was put together on and why we have what we have here, and why everything kind of pyramids up towards the federal level and so on, get involved in relation to, you know, read the Constitution, read the Bill of Rights, read these things that we've talked about in school, but everybody's just kind of waved pass and said that's for somebody else to do. Last, Friday and Saturday night, between Friday at about four o'clock, this last Friday, and Saturday at about two-thirty or so, I want to applaud our first responders so far as Southern California Edison. They're great. Some folks might look at it and say, hey, you know, if the power goes out, then it's their fault, and I pay for that service. I used to hear a lot of those kinds of silly things when I was younger. But they were heroes because they went over knowing that they had tons of work to do, and they worked through, right through the night, helping people. I can guarantee you that when it was about four o'clock in the morning, and I was sitting there watching how dark it was outside my house, and that there was no electricity in my house, and that we had eight, you know, D batteries on fans trying to cool ourselves out to below ninety degrees, when it was one hundred and twenty-two degrees that day, I'd also like to applaud our staff. They had the foresight to respond and open up our cooling center at the senior center for anybody that needed that service. And without those kinds of services, we just don't have a chance. And it was a little bit of a test in relation to our emergency operations. It really was. But I wouldn't like to go through it again. It was really dark, and you know the silly thing is, there was only three streets involved. Everybody else went on their way and just had a great old time. But by the time Edison came over there and turned those lights on, I was hallelujah and slapping them on their backs for what the great work they did. So, in the overall, I think it's up to us to 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 gain a perspective on these circumstance and maybe have a little bit more appreciation for what we really have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Robles.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the City-County Conference. I attended the workshop on public safety. I'm still going to continue reading the materials. It was very, very intense. The one thing that I did come away from, also with the reclassification of crimes, is it's also more difficult to quantify the increase in crime because you have apples and oranges kind of comparison. Also, there was a budget trailer bill that also is probably going to raise the ire of many citizens where public defenders can say that their client was mentally ill at the time, and the prosecuting attorney doesn't get to negotiate on this, and they can throw out the crime altogether. The media reports that I read is to expect some ballot measures on that, possibly looking to repeal Prop forty-seven and one oh nine and all that. So, there'll be rigorous discussion on that. It was fascinating to sit there and listen to handling public meetings. There was a city attorney there that advised us that if we didn't have rules for ourselves as far as time limits on the meeting, for example, many California cities were dealing with reversing sanctuary status for their cities, were actually coming out proclaiming against it, and many were there taking public testimony till three-thirty in the morning. And I asked, do you have to do that? It just seemed, you know, you could go on forever. And I said, no, but you have to have rules of your meetings, when they begin and when they end. Luckily, one one former city councilman that was there from Mountain View said, for example, in Mountain View, their council code of conduct called for a meeting to end at ten PM because no good decisions could be made after ten PM. If there was something that required, you know, extending the time, they could do that. But that was fascinating to me, that was a new item. The other thing too, and the reason I don't like what I call Facebook City Council, which doesn't exist, Brown Act says, we must set a time, a date, and an agenda when we're going to discuss something that affects the city, when we're going to be deliberating on it. Otherwise, what we're doing is we're going around our own process for that. One of the things that this code of conduct and also this meetings deal was excellent about, there's sometimes there's a city in crisis, and the citizens come out, and they don't know it's not on the agenda. For example, Pico Rivera had a city councilman that made some egregious remarks on social media, and the public wanted him fired, so they went to the school board meeting. Well, the school board meeting, it wasn't on the agenda. So, it was having to say, you know, this isn't on the agenda, we're going to have a special meeting, but the public's like, no, we're going to, we're going to talk about this now, we're angry. And so, I really am against disinformation campaigns to the public on how to enter, to impact your city government. You know, you have public comment, and public comment, you can even come and ask us to place something on the agenda. If one or more of us agree, we can, we can certainly do that. And one of the things that I've been pushing for on this council is to have a council code of conduct. And for three years, I've been trying to get this, and we haven't been able to get it. But I want to read from Mountain View's, says, "Request for Staff Resources. Council requests for research or other staff work must be directed to the city manager or the city attorney regarding legal matters or the city clerk regarding matters within the clerk's authority. If more than one hour of staff time will be required to complete task or project, the item will be agendized to ask the city council if time should be spent on preparing a report on the proposed item. Staff responses prepared to council inquiries shall be distributed to all city council members." And as an aside, I have a question too, is when those responses kind of start nipping into Brown Act violations, where I think we need to also look at. Relationship and communication with staff. Staff serves the city council as a whole. Therefore, a council member shall not direct staff to initiate any action, change a course of action, or prepare any report, except as provided in city council policy, which I don't know what theirs is. Work referral process for council advisory bodies and council member committees. A council member shall not initiate any project or study about the approval of the majority of the council. And lastly, council members shall not attempt to pressure or influence discussions, recommendations, workload, schedules, or department priorities absent the approval of the majority of the council. So, I guess you can see where this is, would be something that I hope we embark on. Also, the law allows for a short response to something brought up during public comment. I asked our city manager, from the time that he came to work with us, to provide me a spreadsheet on the summary of funded positions. When he came on board in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, there were fifteen employees. And for two thousand fifteen sixteen, we approved two additional employees. For the next fiscal year, for sixteen seventeen, we approved four point five positions. And two thousand sixteen, in two thousand seventeen eighteen, we approved a net of a half a position. Also, for two thousand sixteen seventeen, in February of two thousand seventeen, there was a number of positions brought to us. One was assistant to the city manager. And we had a spirited discussion where Mr. Hesse and I were very concerned about bringing additional staff on board. And it was the feeling of this body that we needed to provide the city manager with the tools to let him get his job. And we all agreed on that. So, there are a number of things that are happening, they're on the horizon, and I, you know, we need to consider how well we're achieving that. But my point is, is that we had a strong discussion about it, we were very reticent to do it, and our colleagues said, no, we've got to give them the tools. So, we approved those positions, and I think we should move forward when we agree on an item. We had our discussion on it. Then we had positions for two thousand seventeen eighteen, it was one position that was added. And then for this fiscal year that we're going into, we had deletions and additions that ended up being that we had one half of a position that was added. The position for the clerk was an approved position, and it wasn't a new position, and an offer had been accepted for employment. So, that would have been fascinating to lay off somebody at the same time we're giving an offer of employment. In two thousand fourteen fifteen, I felt that I had a principal impact on our settlement with the Colton, City of Colton, about sewer services. And we were able to get a one-time payment of four hundred thousand dollars. And we used that to provide overtime. And the problem with one-time money is that next year, you're going to be back where you were again. We also were going to get three hundred thousand per year for all future years. And when I discussed that with the city manager, which happens to have been Ken Henderson, when I talked about police, he says, well, okay, so then what about next year? When it's four hundred and some thousand, and the next year after that? And you only have that same three hundred thousand. So, I just want to, you know, give some background on that, and we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also attended the City-County Conference and was quite taken with the discussion of the National Training Center at Fort Irwin. Two of the things that stood out to me is that the land that they have at Fort Irwin is equal to the landmass of the state of Rhode Island. They have seven hundred and seventy-five thousand acres of maneuver space, enough room for an entire brigade combat team to operate, and they use that. They have twenty-six thousand feet of airspace, and they've replicated twelve urban towns consisting of twelve hundred buildings. So, the training that they do at that facility is just phenomenal. And they do have opportunities to tour, so I'm definitely interested in doing that. One of the other sessions that I attended wasn't quite as exciting, it was about CalPERS pension issues. And it was long on history and telling us about the problem and real short on creative solutions, unfortunately. You know, the long and short of it is retirees are living longer than expected, and and there have been some issues with CalPERS Board and how they've determined that they wanted to divest their investments from certain asset classes for political reasons. And understandably, I mean, they looked at environmental, social, and governmental policies with respect to their investments and said, we need to be responsible when it comes to these things. And unfortunately, to make that decision, it meant that the return on their investments wasn't as strong. They didn't really offer, they didn't really offer, like I said, a lot of things creatively, solution-wise. They did, of course, tell us other city services are likely to be crowded out in the future, and they don't believe that CalPERS can invest their way out of the predicament. That would require them to have a ten to fifteen percent return on investment annually for the next ten to fifteen years. And so, as much as they could say that they're going to get that, they're not, and they've just reduced their their discount rate as well. So, I think at one time, they thought they could get those returns, and possibly depending on what they were invested in, they could, but but they're being realistic now, saying that they can't do that. And so, that means that the cities are finding ways to to cover the the amount of money that is not coming from these investments. And so, they categorized solutions without help. Basically, it requires more money, and we either have to look at, as a city, existing reserves or one-time events, or pension obligation bonds. Solutions without help also included, when we did have extra money to pay down some of our unfunded liabilities, we should be looking at the options that we have. Do we give that money to CalPERS to buy down our debt? Do we establish an internal service fund? Or do we establish a supplemental pension fund? And those are things that each city needs to look out for themselves, and what makes sense, and based on CalPERS's rules, what would really put them in a better position. They did offer solutions with help, and they said the California Supreme Court could look at individual vested rights or the California rule, but that's not likely to give cities a lot of relief in the short run. And it requires a legislative change, and that's probably not going to happen for a while either. Most legislative changes don't take very, don't happen very often. One of the things they suggested is that perhaps the legislature could allow agencies to negotiate low... to negotiate lower benefit accruals, and maybe CalPERS could allow for hardship contribution rates. In other words, allow a city to extend the way that they pay their debt down instead of having to go into a period where they might have to look at declaring bankruptcy. So pretty much, as I said, they were long on history, telling us how we got to the point we are, and that it's not going to be a short-term solution to get out of it, and pretty much finding ways to pay down your unfunded liability. So the other thing, the other session I went to had to do with housing. Randall Lewis was one of the speakers on that panel. Couple of the things that they talked about is, when they talked about housing needs in the city, or in all the cities in all of California, is the cost drivers that are associated with building, which come down to, of course, labor, materials, and time. And the things that cities have control of is to help developers with the time aspect. In other words, if cities have good control of their permit and approval processes, and they can make that path as smooth and quick as possible, a lower chance of rejection, maybe making sure that developers know what they need going into it, and not delaying the new housing projects, that does help. That does have an opportunity to get development going faster. Some of the things that are on the developer's side of it, though, is looking at modular structures. And that's actually having the homes pretty much modularized, and when they show up at the site, it allows them to have faster build times. They can have daily goals of getting work done. That helps their labor to be more focused. It overall gives a better quality, and with the better quality and the faster build times, it does give them a cost savings. They're also looking at a lower energy use when they're using production line methods to put some of these modular pieces of the homes together. And the interesting thing to me was they talked about multifamily housing, and that's generally what's thought of as affordable housing. But multifamily housing actually costs developers more to build than the single-family homes. And so when you look at high density for single-family, that is a way to make things a little bit more affordable, but generally, the homes tend to be bigger, so they end up not being quite as affordable. And so that, again, they didn't have a whole lot of answers for us, but looking at ways to modularize structures and looking, and asking cities to streamline their processes really would make a difference. I did stay for a little bit of the session on homelessness, and what I took away from that is San Bernardino County had really good results with their veterans who were homeless. And between July 2015 to June 2018, they've housed 1,000 veterans, and they'd had 1,161 cases resolved. What they did is they looked at a multifaceted approach, and that was getting not only elected officials, governments, but also partnerships with service providers and faith communities, and looking at it from all the things that people could bring to the table. I think our county really has a handle on it, and I think it's something that hopefully they reach out to others beyond veterans, and I believe that they plan on doing that. So the last thing I want to end with is the end of an era for our city. On June 28th, we had a special meeting of our oversight board for our dissolution of our redevelopment agency. We had one item that we needed to get taken care of, and that is in the minutes that it passed unanimously. But June 28th marks the last day that our oversight board will meet. All oversight board issues will now be taken up with the county oversight board. So I appreciated the time and effort that the oversight board members put into this since we dissolved our redevelopment agency. All right, I'm going to end there, and I'm going to go on to our next item, which is our public hearings. We have two tonight, and we will follow the sequence as to how I will go forward with this. We will ask each person, if you want to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request-to-speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or somebody else raised at the public hearing described in the notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city, ad or prior to public hearings. All public hearings will be conducted, as I said, in this format. Public hearing will be open. We will ask for any written communication. We will ask for staff presentation. If we have applicant, we will have their comments. They are not limited to three minutes. City council will then have an opportunity to ask questions. We will then open public comment. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. If there's necessity, the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal. Applicant is not limited to three minutes, and then the public hearing will be closed, and city council will deliberate and make a decision. So right now, we will open the public hearing for our 2018-2019 Landscape and Lighting District Assessment eighty-nine dash one. May we have a, are there any written communications for this item? All right. May we please have staff presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Alan French, Public Works Director. Here to present this item to you this evening is our management analyst, Adrian Freeman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Hearing for the annual levy of assessment for the 2018-19 Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. This staff report supports 2030 Vision Goal Number One: Ensure Our Fiscal Viability by Ensuring Appropriate Cost Recovery for Services. In 1989, the Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District eighty-nine dash zero-one was formed for the purpose of maintaining the landscaping and lighting serving Track 1364. It's the bottom shaded area. Subsequently, Track 14264 and Track 14471 were annexed into the Assessment District. In 2016, the Greenbrier Development on Mount Vernon Avenue and the Aegis Pico Builders Development on Palomino Court were annexed into the district. Special benefits to properties within the district include, but are not limited to, improved aesthetic appeal of nearby properties and enhanced adaptation of adequate green space. It is important to note for the council that no increase to the assessment is proposed for this fiscal year. At the regular meeting on June 12th, 2018, the city council adopted a resolution ordering the preparation of plans, specifications, cost estimates, diagrams, the engineer's report, and the acceptance thereof for the district. At this time, staff is recommending council conduct a public hearing to hear appeals of the annual levy of assessment for the 2018-19 Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Assessment. Following the public hearing, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution providing for the annual assessment levy for the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. Should council have any questions, staff or representatives from our consultant, Will Dan, are happy to answer those questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Analyst Freeman. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is the entire city in the Landscape Assessment District? And as tracks are annexed into it, they just become a separate zone of the district?
Thank you for your question. At this time, no, the entire city is not within the district, only those specific tracks that we showed tonight. But we are, as new developments are coming onboard, they are being annexed into the Assessment District.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And that will suffice as our applicant's comments. Public council questions, so we will have public comment at this time, or the request to speak? Thank you. All right, Steve. If you would, please state your full name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. This is for item seven, correct?
Yes. Oh, actually, this is for item six.
That's what I'm saying.
So you'll hold it for the next one. Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, are there any requests to speak on item six? All right, so we will close the public hearing, and we will come back to the city council for their deliberation.
Just have one question for staff. Do we know when historically Landscape and Lighting Assessment Districts started to be formed after the city formation?
Well, this particular district was formed 1989.
Okay, no, I guess what I'm looking for, for the public's notice, I would imagine the question becomes, I know that there are some areas that have, that are annexed into a district, and they pay money for the maintenance of that district. But are there areas, I know there are areas of the city that are not in a Landscape and Lighting District. When did the city change its policy and then start forming landscaping and lighting districts to take care of this maintenance?
We'll have the Public Works Director to answer that. I'm sorry, the Planning and Development Services Director will answer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. So the city started consistently requiring annexation into these districts in approximately 1516 when our city manager, Mr. Deffey, came onboard. He raised the question regarding annexation. At that time, we started requiring it as a condition of approval.
I'm sorry, what year?
Fifteen sixteen fiscal year.
Two thousand fifteen to sixteen?
Fifteen sixteen.
That they started annexing the new developments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, public hearing has been closed, and city council will have their deliberations at this time. Mayor Protem?
I move a adoption of Resolution 2018, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, confirming a diagram and assessment and providing for annual assessment levy for a Landscaping and Street Lighting District.
Madam Mayor Protem, may I suggest that is Street and Lighting District Number eighty-nine dash one, that was inadvertently left off.
And my motion for approval to include two thousand eighteen dash one?
Eighty-nine dash one.
Eighty-nine dash one.
Somehow it made it to our agenda but not into the resolution statement in the packet.
And I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. So we will move on to our second public hearing, which is a hearing of appeals of delinquent refuse, sewer, rental inspection fees, action to collect said delinquent fees on the tax roll, and for the placement of assessments for said delinquent fees on properties located in the city. Again, we will follow the same format as we had the last time, so at this time, I will open the public hearing. I will ask if there is any written correspondence for this particular item. No, Madam Mayor. Okay, so I will ask for staff presentation.
There is no written correspondence that was received.
Sorry. Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Alan French, Public Works Director, here to present this item, to conduct the public hearing for the placement of assessment or liens on delinquent refuges, sewer, and rental inspection fee properties. The staff report supports the 2030 Goal Number One: To Ensure Our Fiscal Viability by Ensuring Appropriate Cost Recovery for Services. This is reflected in our municipal code, Chapter 5.42 and 13.08, for trash and sewer respectively. And for the residential property program, it's reflected in Chapter 5.8 of the municipal The programs, as you can see on the slide, were involving multiple partners. BRTech is over the refuge collection, the City of Colton is for the sewer collection, and the city itself is over the rental property, and that is headed by Director Sandra Melina. Delinquent notices were sent to residents by June 4th of 2018, earlier this year. They went out with the assistance of BRTech and the City of Colton via certified mail. The delinquent accounts were given till noon today to be collected or paid out. Council has been given the latest list that includes up to noon today payments. And this is the latest list that we have with the delinquent accounts. Ninety-three properties were removed for the residential trash and sewer. Two hundred and thirty remain on the list. Three commercial properties were removed from the sewer list, but seven remain. And then sixty-six properties have been removed from the residential property inspection, and thirty-nine are left. Is that correct, Director? So the next step is, staff is recommending that council conduct the public hearing to hear the appeals of the delinquent fees that are proposed on the assessment rolls for the county tax assessor. After hearing these, staff is recommending adopting the report of the delinquent refuge and sewer fees, and directing that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll by the county assessor within the City of Grand Terrace, and adopt a report of delinquent non-owner occupied residential program properties. Fees and fines directed that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as a lien upon the property in the City of Grand Terrace. Should the council have any questions? Sandra Melina is here. Mike Aragon with BRTech. I don't think City of Colton Rep is here. And, great, thank you. City of Colton is here for any questions on that. And rest of staff is here to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director French. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Yeah, I remember the list last year, too. Hopefully, we got some of these resolved, but what's, I see somebody owes eighteen hundred and twenty-five dollars. What's the max it's going to go on the limit on here before legal action takes, or is this going to be a lien forever?
Well, sir, what happens is it goes on the tax roll with the property taxes, and majority of the time, whoever's paying the tax on the property pays the whole thing off. As a result, if it does not get paid, and council can correct me if I'm wrong, at that time, we would apply for and apply the lien on the property. Is that right?
All right, because I see one thing on the rental property, the owner occupied, there's a fine for, I just went through it quick, and there's also a no payment on here on DeSoto Street. I mean, are we going to let them continue, you know, they're renting their property and they're not paying their sewer and trash, too? Wouldn't that be the landlord's responsibility?
I'll let, and Sandra.
Councilmember Hussey, I can speak to the residential program. The inspection fee is one column and per the ordinance, if it's not paid by a certain time, then there's up to a 50% penalty fee, which is the fine you see. And so the total amount is what would be assessed on the property taxes. And so to speak more directly to your question, if the property owner who's responsible for the property does not pay the fees, then it will be assessed on their property taxes. But yes, every year, we will send invoices to all the properties. And so if they're a delinquent this year, they will get an invoice next year because they're still in the program. And if they continue to not pay it, then we will assess it. But it's important to ensure that properties that are not owner occupied are identified in the program and are getting the annual inspections.
Yeah, I realize that. I'm just wanting to make sure we're, the property owners are good stewards for their neighbors who people have actually lived in the neighborhood. And I'm seeing that one house is, you know, they're delinquent, $501 for the sewer and trash, and then the property owner didn't even pay his fees too. So I'm wondering what's going on around here, you know? You know, we got a property owner not paying his fees and we got the residents not paying theirs. So I'm just concerned about people who actually have the homes in that area and then, you know, they're, you know, it's a free country. You can rent your house, but you know, just make sure they're good landlords to maintain their house for other people who own their house. And that's my concern right there. You got not paying their fine and then you got trash and sewer backing up. So that's what I'm just worried about. I mean, do we do further investigations, say you guys, your renter's not paying it either? I mean, if they pay their delinquent fine for property owners, for the non-property owner or whatever?
Councilmember?
The renter?
Councilmember Hussey. City manager has an answer to that.
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to say that just because the payment has not been made, I don't believe the service has been disconnected. So the trash is still being picked up. And so even though there's a very high amount on that, the service is not being, has not been interrupted at this time.
Well, I understand that, Senator, but you know, these, the renters are, it's actually a business for them and we maintain a certain standards for our business out here and, you know, and the owner, renter, landlord is not paying their fees and then, of course, the resident, the renter's not paying their fees. I mean, you're doing a business in a residential area. And I know the sewer's taken care of and I know the trash is taken care of. I think the only way you could evict anybody if their water gets turned off, if I remember right on that. But that's what I'm just worried about. You know, we got people that have houses here and then people are making money off a business and, you know, they got to make sure that, you know, they pay their fair share because it's not fair for these businesses to do that. And it's taking up our city staff time to make this list and go through that and wasting more man-hours than we could do something else. But that was just my concern and thoughts. So thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Are there any further questions? Okay. Seeing none, I will invite public comment, Mr. Steve, if you would come back up, please.
Good evening. I am an investor and I have one of the homes here in the City of Grand Terrace for a couple of years. And this is kind of like my retirement. But anyhow, I received a letter that there is a delinquent on the sewer fees and service of trash. And I'm against or objecting the item that is saying it's for the rental. Just the common sense, if I don't have any call on starting the service and by law, I cannot even stop the service when I receive a delinquent, how will it be my responsibility to pay for that? It's just not fair. The trash company is saying that they don't stop the service. So they keep going. If there is a problem of a tenant, which obviously, if they don't pay their fees for the sewer and the trash and all of that, they are a problem to everybody. They are a problem also for the owner. So there is, there will be ways to get this guy out, but not to stick the bill to the property owner who already is suffering from that. Common sense is to stop the service. If somebody's not paying their bill, they need to be stopped. And then at least the payment will not be, keep going. Then there is another way of getting this guy out, which will help the community, the owner, and the city. By not having any service, then this house is not habitable. Code enforcement can say that this is abandoned home and then the owner can get it. The eviction process can take three to six months and if they play with it, it can take a year. So it's not totally unfair for the owners to be stuck with this bill and it keep going. Several cities don't have this as rental. And I looked at the AB 259, Chapter 564 from the county or the state, and it says, if the service is provided at the request of the property owner, I did not request this service, so then I should not be paying for this. This is the county or the state. Your ordinance also has this. The first one, the first item of your ordinance is saying, every person required to arrange for the refuse refugee collection or the collection of the recyclable of compost shall be liable for the service, every person. I am not the person who asked for that, so I should not be paying for that. So I'm totally asking the council to not adopt for the rental. It's common sense for the owners, yes, but not for the rentals. Thank you.
May I have your last name, sir, for the record? N-A-W-A-R. And did you want to give us the address of the property that you're speaking about?
I pay for the fees for the inspection, all of the other fees. So I am a responsible owner, but just I have a very painful rental. It's, I wrote it here somewhere. It's, I think it's 24. 23243 Glendora.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were there any other requests to speak during this item? Okay. So we will close the public comment and we will go to applicant's rebuttal at this point. I believe we had questions regarding refuse and sewer. If the property owner has not requested it, could we have that, those items addressed, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We do have a representative from the refuge to respond to that.
Also, Mayor, if I might, the, I believe the city's municipal code does require that the property owner is the responsible party. And even if they did not request-
For?
For, for trash and sewer-
Trash and sewer.
And sewer services.
Also, Madam Mayor, I can-
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, further responding, the reason why, at some point, when the ordinance adopted, it's very similar to other municipalities, is that they don't, they feel that the public health and safety would be served to have the trash continue to be picked up, even if the person's not paying for it because of the accumulation of trash and some would be dangerous to the community. And also, by law, because we require that, thus we're allowed to do this type of collection on the tax bill. So they go hand in hand and that's why it's written the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Aragon, did you want to speak?
Well, the points that, excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mike Aragon, Vice President with BRTech Waste Industries. The points that I was going to bring up, City Attorney brought to the council's attention in that it is a mandatory service for both residential and commercial. And under that program, owners of the property are responsible. The description is mandatory service, mandatory pay. Prior to AB 939 and a lot of other state legislation that has come down, that has made cities responsible, more responsible for their waste generation, recycling and organics collection. We used to just pick up the trash. They didn't pay the bill. We'd shut them off, just like you would any other utility or service. With the, with the new legislation, cities were in a position to where they could not, on one side, ignore the waste generation. On the other side, it was a health and safety feature as well. So you'll see a majority, if not all, local communities in the inland empire, Southern California, and throughout most of the state incorporate a mandatory collection program. And the only method of getting that mandatory pay is a lien against that property and putting it on the tax roll. And therefore, it, while a tenant may be generating the charges, ultimately, the owner is responsible. So in some communities, they have come forward with an ordinance that only owners can assign and sign up for trash service and/or sewer service as well. Therefore, it's the owner's responsibility to collect the fees from his own tenant. It's their business and they are responsible for that piece of property. So we have had this in place for a number of years here in the City of Grand Terrace. We go through this assessment feature once a year. There are some communities that go through it on a bimonthly basis and sometimes quarterly basis, just so that they don't miss any real estate transactions in between that timeframe where sometimes those costs could be lost. There was an earlier question, if I may, that Councilman Hussey had with regard to commercial, I don't know if it was a commercial account that had the larger amount that was on there. Generally, with residential, if you take your monthly fee and if they go for a year without paying, it's under $300. Commercial could be quite a larger amount of money. And sometimes they ignore that as well and will have a much more substantial lien. And sometimes they don't care, they leave it on there. Our only recourse to that, and this is with the City of Grand Terrace as well as other cities, they need to make sure that the county does their part. It is our understanding that after a five-year period of time, technically, if that remains unpaid, the county should seek payment of those fees through the sale of that property. And I rarely see that. But that is and was the conditions on these liens. So if the county doesn't take that action, you'll see more and more, especially you'll see this in commercial properties where the fees can just add up on the property, especially if it's in an area where they feel they're upside down on the property and don't particularly care how many dollars get assessed on that parcel. In the meantime, the city, as well as the various haulers, or BRTech in particular, end up losing out on the services that they provide. So we try to keep an eye on that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well and some of the issues that we, that we face out there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Aragon. I appreciate those explanations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for their deliberations. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. Mr. Aragon articulated exactly what occurred. I worked with him in Apple Valley and I was working for the City of San Bernardino when the AB 939 was passed. And most cities reacted to that process by going to mandatory trash service, as did the City of Grand Terrace. And this process, this annual process for us, is fairly straightforward and is typical of processes that you could find up and down the state with other cities in their trash and sewer services. So with that, I'm prepared to make a motion, if you're prepared to. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recommend the adoption of item number two, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, County of San Bernardino, State of California, adopting a report of delinquent refuse and sewer user fees and directing that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as an assessment upon property within the City of Grand Terrace. The second resolution reads as follows, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, County of San Bernardino, State of California, adopting a report of delinquent non-owner-occupied rental property program fees and fines, directing that such delinquent fees and fines be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as a lien upon property within the City of Grand Terrace." And the last motion, I believe, is to approve the auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector agreement for collection of special taxes, fees, and assessments fiscal year 2018-19 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Henderson and a second by Councilmember Wilson. And I am going to ask if staff can follow up with Mr. Steve Narwar on his property so that he has an understanding of why we're moving forward with this. And please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McEnroe voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item eight, which is appointment of planning commission members to fill planning commission vacancies. May we have a staff report? Mr. City Clerk, Deborah Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. The staff report before you supports our mission to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning within the constraints of physically responsible government. The planning commission is a five-member board appointed by the city council that serves for four-year terms at the pleasure of the city council. At the end of 2017-2018 fiscal year, Commissioners Allen and Drew's terms expired along with the vacancy left by former Commissioner Gocher. The city advertised to solicit applications for the planning commission between the dates of May 17, 2018, through June 12, 2018. We received three applications from the following individuals, Jeffrey Allen, Edward Drew, and Jeffrey McConnell. At this time, staff recommends to conduct interviews and take the following action. Appoint the three planning commission members to fill three new four-year terms expiring on June 30, 2022. And I do apologize, it says 2018 in the staff report. I'm here if you have any other questions.
Thank you, City Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to conduct interviews?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, you don't need to conduct interviews. If, all you need to do is appoint people.
Thank you. All right. Are there questions of staff at this time from my colleagues? Okay. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council and determine what, how you'd like to move forward with this process.
I might suggest that the two incumbents we are familiar with, and perhaps the third applicant can just come to the podium and give us some background on his qualifications and why we should choose him.
Councilmember Henderson.
I think I agree with Mayor Protem's suggestion. Mr. Drew and Mr. Allen have served well in their capacity and we all know that if we're successful in our economic development program, we'll need experienced planning commissioners and continuity with the group. And so I would support what Mayor Protem has suggested.
Mayor Protem, will you make that as a motion?
I move that we reappoint Jeffrey Allen and Ed Drew for the position, two of the three positions for planning commission, and to conduct an interview for the third applicant, Jeffrey McConnell. applicant, Jeffrey McConnell.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second by councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes. Mayor Protem Robles voting yes and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. McConnell, if you would please come to lectern and...
Madam Mayor.
And answer the five questions that are before me and I won't give you the benefit of knowing them.
Yeah, I would like to have him answer the five questions.
Okay. Uh, shall we, shall we hand you this, this list of questions and you can give us an overview?
If you so desire, yes.
All right.
This, this microphone works with much better.
This, this will give you at least a, a guideline of, of where to stay as far as what to say about yourself.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. If anyone has an extra set of questions, apparently I'm the only one that didn't receive. Thank you.
Okay, I, um, for small, let me reiterate, excuse me. Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue, resident of Grand Terrace for 18 years. So let me start out by saying I have been coming to most all the planning commission meetings and council meetings for 17 years. I've been to more planning commission meetings than anyone in Grand Terrace except for Mr. Wilson. I've been to more council meetings than anyone in Grand Terrace except for maybe Ms. Ann Peta. So I am familiar with some of these questions because they have been asked for over the years. And by the way, this is my fifth time applying for the planning commission. So, number one, please explain your interest in serving in the planning commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community. Many of you know me for many years. I have been served on, let's see, in 2001, I joined the, um, Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I served for three years because I wanted to get involved in, um, Grand Terrace as a result of my problems with the city regarding building of my garage. So I wanted to, uh, I was spurred to, uh, get involved to help make a change in Grand Terrace. So I also, um, for 18 years, 17 years, I have been serving Grand Terrace in many, in many formats, including the Board of Directors for the Chamber. I was, uh, six years, uh, editor of the Blue Mountain Outlook, 14 years on the, um, Lions Club, several times on the board. Um, I was served on the ad hoc committee for the Budget Advisory Committee. I've been on the traffic committee and various other committees over the years. I volunteered on many committees and volun- and got involved and gone to many meetings, planning commission workshops. Those who've been here a long time have seen me at, it's just, most all the meetings. I'm extremely involved. I think I have a good pulse of, of the people. As planning commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 vision? Well, some of the, most of the things on the 2030 vision are great, especially regarding the implementation of, uh, public and private partnerships. Well, I've spoken at this podium and commented with Mr. Duffy on several and tried to get involved in a few since I have been a broker. I've been licensed for, uh, 40 years, broker for about seven. I can't recall how many. So I'm, I'm very involved in the community and trying to, I also an investor. I buy distressed properties and try and help Grand Terrace become a more beautiful place. So, and I try and help with some of my clients get involved and work their way through the system, uh, in Grand Terrace also. I was a contractor for 30 years and a builder for about 40. So I'm very well familiar with, uh, most of the building system. So as far as the 2030 vision, I want to, I believe in economic development. That is our savior. The more rooftops, I always believe more rooftops, more rooftops, more rooftops. That is our main source of income is from the, um, our share, 20% share of the, um, tax, property tax. So the more rooftops we have, the more we build. I think we get about 40% of our, um, general budget comes from property tax. So I'm very big on that part of the 2030 vision. Number three, do you feel as a citizen of the community that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications, other issues? What will you use as your guide for decision making? Well, as recently as this past year regarding the 40-acre rezoning, I've found basically, uh, and over the 17 years, having the pulse of the people that I try and go with what we, the people, want to see the vision of Grand Terrace because we, the people, in the end, make the final decisions. And a lot of them like to, um, share their opinions, but don't do much beyond that. But at least you know where, where they're coming from. And, and as, we cannot longer be a, uh, Mayberry, but we can still try and have the flavor of a, uh, collective community, a family community. When I was editor to the Blue Mountain Outlook, I always promoted a lot of the Soccer USA, Soccer Mom feelings of the community. I put a lot of pictures of the kids playing soccer, little leagues and everything. And the, uh, the interest in the, yeah, the newspaper actually grew up to 24 pages and got lots of requests for extra copies when they saw their kid or grandchild in the paper. So I, no, I, I feel that the people, we, the people, really want to continue to have that wholesome feeling of a, a small knit community. So I, I'm, I'm not a big favorite fan of stack and pack like some of these cities are doing along the freeways and, uh, public transit lines. Do you feel that you have any conflict of interest that will arise if you're appointed to the planning commission? Well, I've owned four properties in Grand Terrace, so sometimes it may come up if it's a, a development next to my property. Other than that, I don't see any of the conflict. If an applicant were to contact you directly and request a one-on-one meeting about their project, how would you handle it? Well, if they want to talk to me, I'll listen to them and then I'll tell them to take it to the, uh, planning commission. Number five, please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years. Traffic is going to be one of them, but you cannot really stop pass-through traffic, especially with the 2,000-plus homes that are eventually going to be built in High Grove. A lot of them are going to come through town. Great for sales tax, great for our business community. I've talked to many business owners over the years, especially as, uh, editor of the Blue Mountain Outlook, trying to get ads and stuff. They would love to see more traffic. They would love to see more, uh, sales. The only way you can get sales is to have people live here and shop here. And sometimes that's hard to do. If you don't support your local businesses, then they will leave. I understand the demographic process for a, a, a business that wants to come to town, depending on the size of business and what they serve or sell. So, uh, some of you may not know, Smart and Final was looking at the old Stater Brothers issue, but they did a traffic count and they just didn't have a good enough traffic count. So they left, went down to Mount Vernon and built down there. And now they're having problems with, uh, theft. So they're second-guessing their choice. But, you know, it still comes down to, you know, if you're a business, you're there to make money. So where are you going to put your store? So, um, eateries seem to be well. I, I hope that the, um, the Lewis Development can fulfill their, um, commitment to build the, uh, commercial district, um, so that that will really generate a lot of sales tax and traffic. And more people will know about Grand Terrace and hopefully buy their homes here, preferably through their local broker. So, um, it's a crime, yeah, well, we got to do something about the crime. That's one of the key development features. It, it, if you have too high of a crime, it affects the property values. So I'm very familiar with all these. I've seen these questions before. And, um, like I said, if, if anybody knows what goes on and how to handle themselves at a planning commission meeting, it's certainly me. I've been to quite a few. Any questions?
Thank, thank you, Mr. McConnell. I appreciate your time in answering these questions and being here tonight and, and applying. And, um, I'm going to bring it back to council for their deliberations. We have one vacant seat and we have one applicant.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. McConnell. Or is the question session over? Is, are we limited to these questions?
We gen- we generally ask the five questions when we ask these. Um, I, I imagine there could be more questions at this time, but, um...
I don't want to...
But generally, if, if we had more applicants, these would be the five questions that we would ask.
Okay. Then I don't want to diverge from, from past practice. I, I, we'll leave it at that.
I mean, unless there's a, there's a follow-up to some, well, actually, we don't ever usually ask for follow-ups either. So at this point, um, how would you like to move forward? Councilmember Wilson.
I'd like to make a motion that we appro- appoint, uh, Mr. Jeffrey McConnell as the third, uh, planning commission member to fill the empty seat. The new four-year term is expiring on June 30th, 2018.
I second the motion.
All right. There's a motion by councilmember Wilson and second by Mayor Protem Robles. I want to ask one clarification. All three of these terms are up in 2022?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. McConnell. Thank you for continuing to try. I'm going to call a six-minute recess. All right. We will reconvene to open session. Our next item on the agenda, item number nine, approval of standard offer agreement and escrow instructions for purchase of real estate between city of Grand Terrace and the 22400 Barton LLC to purchase city-owned property located at 22400 Barton Road, number 200. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sandra Molina. I'm the Planning and Development Services Director. And before I go into the presentation, I did want to let the council know that, um, the presentation this evening will be done by both, um, Assistant City Manager Fortune and myself. Um, in the agenda report, there's, there's quite a discussion regarding the fiscal analysis of this report, and so she will present that item, or that portion of this item. This item does support our 2030 vision statement to ensure our, um, fiscal viability because the sale of this former childcare property will place this property on the county assessor's tax rolls, um, that were property that hasn't been on that roll. So this, this, um, property is, uh, as indicated by the mayor, located at 22400 Barton Road, number 200. It's the former childcare facility. So it's about a, just under an acre piece of property and has a 6,500 square foot building on it currently. So give, give the council and the audience some background. Um, the city council last year had, um, approved a three-year lease agreement with Family Services Association to operate the childcare center on that property with an option to purchase it. The, uh, Family Services Association did inform the city that they were not going to, uh, take the option to purchase and they were also terminating the lease. Therefore, the property became available. The city was no longer operating a childcare center. And so, um, uh, just, just a couple of weeks ago, the, um, city manager did receive a proposed purchase of the property and the buyer is proposing to purchase the property for a million dollars, uh, and to include all the furniture, fixtures, and equipment that's in the building that doesn't belong to FSA. The, um, purchase and sell agreement and escrow instructions is attached to the staff report. Um, and based on that agreement, the escrow is going to be, um, up to 90 days. Uh, just last week on July 5th, the, uh, planning commission conducted a meeting and, uh, considered the general plan conformance of the sale of this particular property as required by the California Government Code. And the planning commission did adopt a resolution finding that the sale of the property is consistent with the general plan. The buyer has indicated that their, um, intent is to, um, run a daycare on the property or, or rent it out for a daycare. So the use will be, um, exactly what was there before. Um, if that, uh, particular user, um, doesn't materialize, then there are other commercial uses in the Barton Road specific plan that would be permissible on that property. And at this point, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Assistant City Manager Fortune. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city council. Um, as planning director Molina has stated, um, the sale is estimated at 1.0 million. Um, and so we wanted to inform council that the city's total current liability, unfunded accrued liability as of June 30th is roughly about 4.8 million. And as everyone is aware, a portion of that does include retirement benefits for prior city childcare employees. Um, at one point last year, we, city council approved the termination of city offered childcare services and outsourced it to FSA. Unfortunately, as, as we all know, FSA has told us they will no longer be able to continue the service and they concluded their services, uh, last June 29th. So at our last audited financial statements, to give, uh, city council an idea, the childcare fund closed with a negative balance of 308,000. What that means is, um, the childcare fund still had obligations to pay. Not having had the cash, they borrowed from the whole city's cash pool to pay for that. So when we close our books, we show their negative. What we mean is we're saying that all, the funds will pretend they have their cash back and they will hold their, their negative balance. Now, 1718, um, we have, we had again costs that they incurred. When we outsourced to FSA, there were some minor, um, adjust, uh, minor building improvements that this city to childcare fund had made, plus their UAL, their unfunded accrued liability, which totaled about 158. So when we closed the books for 2018, their negative balance would now have increased to 465. So here now for the current fiscal year, their portion of that unfunded accrued liability will be 150,000, which we intend to pay before the end of this month. That is when it's due. We can pay it monthly or we can pay it at the beginning of the year. When we pay it at the beginning of the year, they give us a $12,000 discount because that is the additional interest stable charge for paying it on a monthly basis. So by the end of this new fiscal year, um, the total owed by the childcare fund would be 615,000. So to give an idea, when I had said that in, uh, 1718, in 1819, um, this is the breakdown of that 400,000. Their 150 plus the city's 250, our current year total unfunded accrued liability is 400,000. So as the planning director had mentioned, what we are recommending to approve the standard offer, authorize the executive director to execute that agreement, and approve that 615,000 from the proceeds of the sale be set aside to actually pay their negative fund balance. Um, again, total negative fund balance will be 615 at the end of this fiscal year. So what we've also included in the staff report is for, um, fiscal year 1920. At the time, we proposed a budget of which we balanced for two years. Um, the city manager had not, had yet received any offers or interest, uh, in the property. So when we proposed the budget for 1920, all we would have done was given that childcare fund an additional negative balance. So our projection again, um, based on what CalPERS has provided, our total unfunded liability is going up from 400 this year to 435 next year. Again, it is a projection of which again, child cares, um, would be 150,000. And, and as I mentioned, that additional 150 was not budgeted, uh, budgeted in the balance budget that we presented to you, um, last month. So again, um, you know, the 615, we recommend that it be committed to reserves and the remaining be put into the, uh, general fund reserves to cover future liabilities, including unfunded accrued liability. That, that completes our report. Um, we will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune and Director Molina. Does, uh, council have any questions of staff at this time? Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, um, so it says in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, unfunded accrued liability for CalPERS for childcare was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Then 2018 nineteen, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But then when you get into the tax future unfunded accrued liability, you're saying for fiscal year 2019 twenty is four hundred and thirty-five thousand. So I guess my question is, is there is no recommendation to cover all of it from the proceeds of this?
No, ma'am. The, and I might not have written it correctly. The total unfunded liability is four hundred and thirty-five thousand. I am projecting two hundred and eighty-five thousand will be the city's portion and the childcare's portion is a hundred and fifty thousand of that four hundred and thirty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Hesse.
How many retirees do we have on the childcare, do you know?
I'm sorry, sir. Currently, I would have to get back to you, but since I have been here, we've had four retirees who retired actually from tier one.
Because I was reading, now, they get two point seven percent at fifty-five?
That is correct, sir.
I didn't get that much being a federal correction officer. All right, I would just like to know how many retirees we have.
And I will send that to city council.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, I will open public comment. Any requests to speak? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their deliberations. And perhaps a motion. Councilmember Wilson.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the standard offer agreement escrow instruction for purchase of real estate between the City of Grand Terrace and 22400 Barton LLC for the purchase of 22400 Barton Road, number 200. Number two, authorize the Executive Director to execute and implement the agreement. And number three, approve that six hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars from the proceeds of the sale of the above-mentioned property be set aside to be committed to clear the childcare fund's negative fund balance by paying back the internal loan from the city's cash pool.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Item ten, award from Community Benefits Fund of Friends of Grand Terrace Branch Library for the 2018 Summer Reading Program. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Cynthia Fortune. Staff report before you supports the following city council goals. Goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability. And goal number four, developing and implementing successful partnerships with our community groups, our local youth programs, and senior organizations. So before the city council is the applications for the month of July for the Community Benefits Fund. The Community Benefits Fund was approved by city council in the amount of twenty thousand. It was originally twenty-five, five thousand now has been designated for the light-up Grand Terrace activity. So the application we received today is for the Friends of the Library. This is for their 2018 Summer Reading Program, and they're requesting two thousand dollars. And the table before council just gives a breakdown of how we're allocating that twenty thousand. Approval of that will bring down our balance to eighteen. And as you can see, it's going to serve our youth by providing that summer reading program. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Ms. Fortune, it's a good program, but you know, when I walked in tonight, I seen that bulletin board on the activities they have for our kids, and I haven't seen that advertised anywhere else. Do we have it advertised on the city website? I know it's the library, but we need to get the word out, because there's some pretty good things, and that's also a preventative for a lot of these kids to stay out of trouble and stuff.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We actually have it advertised as a part of our summer activity guide that we just recently released.
Okay. I just want to make sure the word, because I know we got kiosks out, and I see the movies are being done, but I don't know if the, I don't really see it like for those activities. They look like pretty good activities. And that's all I had, the question and advertisement on that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Ms. Fortune, so the original source of the Community Benefits Funds was from where?
The general fund, Mayor Protem.
But was, okay, I guess I'll just go ahead and say that was part of the money, the one-time money we got from the City of Coton that we programmed into the Community Benefits Fund. You weren't employed by us, I guess, when we did that.
That is correct, sir. Mayor Protem, it was part.
Yeah, and I just want to say for the public, so since they've been cooperating and providing things, they, in the report, it says the Friends share a love of books and learning, value the Grand Terrace Library as a place of knowledge and inspiration. And it goes on for their, their goals. But in 2015, it was seventeen hundred and fifty dollars, 2016, two thousand, 2017, two thousand, for the reading program, and then for library display materials and DVD, two thousand. So we've given, if we approve this tonight, seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to, to help buttress the Grand Terrace Library's mission.
Is that a motion?
It will be now. I move the recommendation to approve the award two thousand from the City Community Benefits Fund to the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library to help cover the costs of the Grand Terrace Branch Library's 2018 Summer Reading Program.
I will second, and for just a comment. I was out there on Saturday morning at about, I don't know, it's about nine o'clock, maybe ten o'clock, and the poor folks from the Friends of the Library were over there in the parking lot with a tarp over them. And it was about a hundred and ten degrees, and it's not the first time that they've managed to put together a book sale to try to engender proceeds. So, yeah, I think they're doing it part. They're also volunteering something fantastic, so, good people. And some of them are well over eighty years old. So I'd like to thank them.
And were you seconded? All right. I have a motion by Mayor Protem, a second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Next is City Manager Communications. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make these announcements quick. So just wanted to remind the community that yoga, Tai Chi, Zumba is in the park. We are first meeting last week with Zumba in the park, and that's every Saturday morning at Veterans Freedom Park. And then this week starts Tai Chi at the Susan Pettit Park, and then the following week, all three of them will be active at yoga in the park, at the fitness park will be the, will be three different locations. In addition to that, we have movies in the park next weekend. Veterans Freedom Park will have the Sandlot, the movie, music, and movies in the park. And then after that, on the twenty-eighth, Ferdinand. I want to say that the response that we've received so far for music and movies in the park is rivaling that that we've seen for the holiday tree lighting program and also the dog park openings. We're getting up into five thousand, six thousand impressions of people responding to, to the event. So that's pretty good. Also, starting this Friday is our summer swim on Friday and Saturday program, July thirteenth and through July twenty-eighth on Friday and Saturday. Adult lap swim starts at ten to eleven-thirty. That means that there'll just be adults there lap swimming. And then it's open swim for everyone to come at eleven-thirty to three P.M. And we partnered with one, the Colton Joint Unified School District, and the Piranha Swim Club. And I guess that's something that we're going to be hearing more about. The Piranha Swim Club is really taking off. They said that they moved from the Jurassic Center in Loma Linda, and they are just amazed at the response they've gotten over there. And just a reminder, we have partnered with the Colton Joint Unified School District for the rehab of the Terrace Hills Middle School Pool, but they're having some issues with some leakage. But when they finish that, then maybe next year, we'll be able to have a longer period of swimming festivities. With that, I can close my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Our next item is closed session, of which we have two items. So we will recess to closed section, session. The first item is public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title city attorney. The second is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title city manager. We will go to closed session. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for your attention. And for those of you that will not be with us when we come back, our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, 2018, at six P.M. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting. And so at this time, we are in closed session. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met in closed session to discuss two items, public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title city attorney. We gave direction, council gave direction to staff. Item number two, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title city manager. Council gave direction to staff. There are no other reportable items. So at this time, we will adjourn. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, 2018, at six P.M. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you all for your time and attendance. We are adjourned.